Good afternoon, everyone. The December 10th, 2024 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:02. I am Sarah Nelson, Council President. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Rink?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. There are no presentations today, so we'll get right into our hybrid public comment period. How many people have signed up to speak, please?
We currently have seven in-person speakers and two remote speakers signed up.
All right, thank you very much. We'll start with the in-person, and everyone gets two minutes. Thank you.
Excuse me. Speakers will be called in the order in which they are registered. We will alternate between sets of in-person speakers and remote speakers, starting with in-person speakers first. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of their time, and speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call on the next speaker. Thank you.
All right, our first in-person speaker is Demetrius Redwine, followed by Ashley Barber and Carolyn Malone.
My call is for the mayor. I would ask that he recludes himself from the next race, because we need a break. We need a break in this city. We need a break for all of our souls. If he don't, then the Redwine curse has followed me all my life, and he knows about it, and I will begin to expose his secrets here in this city. So either he can leave, or he be exposed. I don't really have much to say. He have as many jobs as I have names in this city. I don't know who I am, but he does. So I just ask that he just recludes himself from the next election. Please, someone tell him for me. He knows who I am. And if no one told you today that they love you, I love you.
Thank you. Next is Ashley Barber, followed by Carolyn Malone.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ashley Barber, and I am with Washington Alarm, a Seattle-based family-owned business for more than 81 years. I am here today, as I have been for many weeks now, to seek the council's support in requesting a meeting with the Seattle Police Department. In the 71 days since interim Chief Rohr implemented the verified alarm response policy, the Seattle Police Department will only respond to alarms that they consider verified through audio, visual, or panic button evidence. While we understand this policy aims to reduce responses to false alarms, it was implemented without consulting security industry experts who could offer valuable solutions to the underlying concerns. The current approach to alarm verification is problematic. The verification requirements demonstrate a fundamental misunderstanding of how modern security systems work and leave thousands of residents unprotected and without enough time to make costly upgrades to their security systems. Rather than creating such restrictive verification criteria, we need dialogue between law enforcement and security experts about addressing false alarms, a solvable problem. Security systems, when properly understood and utilized, can be valuable tools for law enforcement. We recognize the officer shortage challenge facing the Seattle Police Department. However, we believe that this was a careless policy decision made without proper forethought. It is also clear that even with proper evidence, police responses are sporadic and can often take hours. Seattle 911 data shows that from October 1st through today, 9,153 emergency police dispatches were marked as unable to locate incident or complainant. And data also shows that this is because response times were so delayed that callers or perpetrators have left the scene by the time officers have arrived. Again, I am requesting a meeting between the Seattle Police Department and security industry experts. This collaboration could help develop more effective verification protocols while supporting our police force's efficient use of resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolyn Malone, followed by Gabe Jones.
I'm Carolyn Malone. Who's next? Gino Betts, the OPA director, just resigned. Now I hear Tammy Morales has resigned. It seems that, and it is true, that all of the people who work for the people, public servants, end up resigning because they can't deal with these conservatives on the council. Who's next? Chief Fire Chief Scoggins? Because some of his men plot against him, tried to embarrass him. Bruce Harrell, before he was mayor, had to more or less justify Chief Scoggins' presence here. He told the opposition that the chief was vetted. He's fully qualified. How many more decent people will resign because of a conservative city council? And on December 3rd, you're a mini filibuster to allow the media to leave and not record the comments. My comments and others were not lost on me. I noticed the media left, and then you engaged in a proclamation for a well-deserving journalist, but that was not the appropriate venue for it. And to hold the audience and the council hostage and dismiss the media, I thought, was tactless. I still have trouble in my housing with this cop. The manager left because of him. And yes, I will say it. I miss Shama Sawant and Lisa Turbo. They worked for the people, not against us.
Next speaker is Gabe Jones, followed by Bennett Hazelton.
Howdy, folks. My name is Gabriel Jones, and since we do have councilmembers sitting down, I would like to say why I would be the absolute best next candidate. I'm going to go left-to-right with some of you, because I don't have as much time as I would like. Councilmember Rink, first pitch would be, as someone who rides bikes a lot, I also ride bikes a lot. We've seen how horrific the city can be with biking infrastructure. I'd love to see more get better. Councilmember Moore, you've made a lot of, you've gone very far from the days of soap soda. You've done a lot of positive things, and I'm excited to help grow, and we can help the city better, better, and better every day. Councilmember Nelson, if you do this, since you know, not a very big fan of First Amendment's rights of people clapping and democracy, I promise if you look at me, I will not clap on council. Councilmember Rivera, I know after the huge failure of the cut of EDI funding, you blame Councilmember Morales for disinformation. If you choose me, I will take the fall off whatever bad policy you want to pass. Councilmember Saka, if you let me pick me, I, for the price of a case of beer and two pizzas, will take care of the little berry that makes your commute a little harder. Do it completely myself to save the city some millions. Councilmember Morales, if, I know you can't pick me, but if you could, what I would do is I would continue your long, hard work you do in the city to protect the people you work for, doing, making amazing changes, fighting for affordable housing, and really listening to the people. And for the whole council, since it seems to be a prerequisite to have to bully councilmembers, if you pick me to be your next councilmember, I will also help you doing this. Personally, my pick would be Nelson, but like, if you want to go for Kettle, understandable. I'll go for it. Thank you also very much for your time, and I can't wait to be your next city councilmember.
Next is Bennett Hazelton, followed by David Toledo.
Good afternoon, council. I would like to invite the city council to take some sort of action on the issue that I've been researching with the public document request regarding the city attorney's office. Just to recap, you know, the city attorney put out a press release saying that disqualifying Judge Vidati from hearing criminal cases and saying she had ruled a defendant was in compliance and dismissed a case, even though the defendant refused to get on a transport van to rehab because they were in a wheelchair. And in real life, the defendant had been shot in the leg and was, had tried to board the transport van and was unable to, and the rehab center would not admit her because he had an upcoming surgery scheduled for her leg. And they also, Judge Vidati did not find that she was in compliance. She delayed making a decision, and Judge Vidati did not dismiss the case either. So pretty much every part of that press release was false with regard to Judge Vidati. Now, this has been gaining traction in the media since last time I talked to her. The Stranger did an article last Friday about the false statements in the Judge Vidati memo. The Stranger and I have both bent over backward to give the city attorney's office every opportunity to explain. We both contacted them. Natalie Walton Anderson, who wrote the memo, you know, it's the same one, she was just here. I saw her, and I was like, looked on my phone, wait, is that, I looked up her name. Oh, that's a picture. That's the person. And I asked her on the way out, you know, we're raising questions about this memo that you wrote. Is there any explanation for how these statements crept into it? And she's just like, I don't want to talk about it. I refuse to talk about it. So we have given them a chance. I think it is appropriate for an individual council member, or perhaps collectively, to issue some sort of statement calling on the city attorney's office to answer questions about what happened here. I understand the city council cannot hire and fire the city attorney, but it's perfectly appropriate for anybody of you who wants to individually to put out a statement or collectively ask for a resolution calling on them to provide answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Toledo, followed by Ian Morrison.
I just came down today to show my support for the reappointment of Tanya Wu for the District 2 position. I'm not sure if you've started those considerations or not. And I'd really quickly like to share a story. I attended school in the Central District back in the 80s, and one of my best friends and co-breakdancer's name was Merle Brown. And I spent a lot of nights at Merle's house, sleeping on his bedroom floor. And he had great parents, and Uncle Elmer, as I like to call him, was just always around and just always a great mentor. And later in life, I found out that Elmer Dixon and his brother were co-founders of the Black Panther Party back in the 70s in Seattle and very active in the community. So around 2013, when there was a overwhelming amount of youth-on-youth murder in the Central District in the South End, I went to Elmer Dixon and asked him, could he come with me to talk to Larry Gossett? And Larry Gos, while we were waiting in the waiting room, Elmer said, you know, Larry is the only politician that I trust. And then he said, but there's a young person, Tammy Morales, that's in the South End that I really like. So I haven't had a lot of interaction with Tammy, but I just want to say that just having Uncle Elmer's support always made me think that you have something special. So I just wanted to come today and say, thank you for your service. And then again, I just want to say, I feel like Tanya is connected to the community as well, in a different way than Tammy, but she is connected, and she does have support there. So again...
Next is Ian Morrison.
Thank you, councilmembers. Ian Morrison with McCullough Hill, here to speak on behalf of the Living Building and Three Bedroom Bonus Bill that is before the council today. We appreciated the excellent deliberations in the Land Use Committee and the four members recommending support. We understand that there are a couple of amendments here. This bill does a great thing, right? The city council has clarified that living building projects can get additional height, and also in the downtown projects that provide 10 three-bedroom family-sized units can get height. STCI's initiation of the code created by the council was always that those two incentives could be stacked together. We represent a project in Belltown that was the first project to take advantage of that. So it went through the design review process, got unanimously approved by the Design Review Board, provides not only 10 three-bedroom units, but also over 40 two-bedroom units, and a sustainable building that will be certified as a living building, sustainable building in downtown Belltown, bringing over 180 new families into downtown. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the vision of more family-sized units in the downtown. It will be part of the activation of the city. There was an appeal that said, okay, city council, you should have spoken clearer. So this piece of legislation does exactly that. It clarifies what STCI always thought was the intent with this project and other projects. So we support this. We think this is consistent with what downtown should be welcoming to everyone, having, being a leader on sustainability. There are a couple of amendments. We had a good conversation in the Land Use Committee that we've seen here generally in support of those amendments. We think that exactly this type of work of studying the opportunity to stack incentives citywide would be great, and so we would encourage that being part of the program. We also understand that there's an amendment from Councilmember Moore that would say that this, you know, you can effectively just stack these two amendments. If that is the intent of that amendment, we've just had, just received it, again, that is consistent with this project that was approved and would also be in support. So we ask for the council's approval of this and to be able to welcome more families in sustainable buildings downtown, and we appreciate the deliberation of those amendments. And with those amendments, we think this is a great step forward for downtown livability. Thank you.
We're now moving to remote public commenters.
Our first remote public commenter will be Alberto Alvarez, followed by Yvette Dinich. Go ahead, Alberto.
Over 200,000 Seattle voters demand action on progressive revenue. Over 300,000 Seattle renters demand protection on evictions. Over 400,000 Seattle workers demand living wages and choice on return to office. Bob Kettle, Sarah Nelson, and Maritza Rivera have spent a year decrying the previous councils. They bellyache about a time when Oxford Economics placed us in the top five economic powerhouse cities in the world. Also, for year 2023, GDP growth was at 6% far outpacing other regions. New leadership on this council is needed, a council that will take action against the crime of business groups lobbying to underpay Seattle workers, the crime of rental management colluding to price fix and treat evictions as a business model. Council, take action on progressive revenue. Build affordable housing. The workforce is also your spending force. Living wages to every worker is money spent back into local economies. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Our next remote speaker is Yvette Dinich, and will be followed by David Haynes. Go ahead, Yvette.
Greetings, councilmembers. Thank you for your hard work, thoughtfulness, and due diligence in granting public funds to community organizations. From my community engagements in the South End, particularly Main Beach, through volunteer work, play, and other activities, I have noticed that there are organizations that receive city funding and yet have nothing to show for it, how the money was spent. And that concerns me greatly. Are there currently any accountability methods in place, and if so, is that information available to the public? Much appreciated go to the organizations that consistently do an exemplary and measurable job in providing to our community, specifically the Main Valley Food Bank, specifically Repair and Store Machinery Outreach, Give Stop Hope, and the Rainy Beach Urban Farm in Welling. Thank you for listening, Yvette Dinich, Color Girls, Garden Club.
Thank you. Our next public remote speaker is David Haynes, although I'm not sure that he's present. David, are you present? Okay.
That concludes our public commentary. David Haynes is not present.
Thank you very much. So then that, we have now reached the end of our public comment period. Nobody else has signed up in person. Okay. Then we will move on. So moving on to the introduction and referral calendar, there are no presentations, so if there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Seeing none, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Looking twice, okay, the agenda is adopted. Now we'll consider the proposed consent calendar, and there are only two items, the minutes of December 3rd, 2024, and the payroll bill, Council Bill 120923. Are there any items that councilmembers would like to remove from the consent calendar? Nope, seeing none. I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rink?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar is adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes in legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? All right, moving on to item one. Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Council Bill 120919 relating to city employment, providing wage increases for 2025 and 2026 for certain non-represented city job titles, and providing adjustments for certain non-represented job titles.
Thank you very much. I move to pass Council Bill 120919. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, as sponsor of this bill, I'll address it first, then open it up to councilmember question, councilmembers for questions. So as you read from the central staff memo from Karina Bull, last, which was sent last Friday, there are summaries of this piece of legislation and the following. And basically, this legislation would provide wage adjustments in 2025 and 2026 for certain non-represented employees in certain step progression job titles. And for example, that is positions with salary increments awarded in discrete steps with little discretion from the appointing authority as to what those, what the increase or decrease in wages would be. The wage adjustments would be consistent with those for represented employees covered by the Coalition of City Unions, or Coalition for short, and their collective bargaining agreement, which is ordinance 127005. And just in specific, the legislation would provide a 4% wage increase for most non-represented employees in step progression job titles for 2025. Non-represented employees in library positions and/or discretionary pay programs are specifically excluded from this wage increase. Two, provide negotiated wage adjustments in addition to the 4% wage increase for 13 non-represented titles, consistent with the negotiated wage adjustments that identical titles represented in the coalition will receive in 2025. And then three, provide up to a 5% wage increase for most non-represented employees in step progression job titles for 2026. And this is, this is similar to what has been, this is consistent with the practice that the, that CBO has done in every year, and we are just simply finishing up the year with this legislation. And, well, first I'll stop there. Are there any questions? I see no questions. All right, like I was just going to say, historically, the city has provided the same benefits and other conditions of employment and opportunities for wage increases for employees represented by coalition unions as for non-represented employees. So if there are no, go ahead. I see your hand.
Sorry, council. Thank you. I just, I do have a question. I think we all received an email relating to, excuse me, subordinate positions. Wade, the wage compression issue would be resolved with the pending city council bill. The pay disparity being left in for non-representative supervisors of representative staff, that language is being taken out. So I'm just curious about when that issue is going to be addressed.
Thank you very much, and thank you for asking that question. And I did receive an email back from, from analyst Bull in response, and I'll just read what she says. "I'm writing with information that relates to an email recently sent to councilmembers expressing concerns about the omission of wage adjustments for non-represented shop operations supervisors/ fleets division in the non-rep wages ordinance. According to the email, there is an inversion issue with shop operations supervisors being compensated at a lower rate than their subordinate automotive chief, automotive crew chiefs due to wage adjustments for the subordinate employees in the coalition contracts. Although apprised of the issue, SDHR decided to omit wage adjustments for the shop operations supervisors in the non-rep wages ordinance. I," Karina Bull, "followed up with SDHR on the situation and learned the following. SDHR, that is the Seattle Department of Human Resources, completed a citywide analysis of compression and inversion impacts and actions that are necessary to correct for those issues. SDHR plans to introduce separate legislation during the first quarter of 2025 to address the inversion issues, including the shop operations supervisor classification. Due to the unique and specialized scope of the project as well as the project timeline, SDHR decided to draft separate legislation to address the inversion issues rather than include those changes in the non-rep wages ordinance or the routine quarterly employment ordinances. The effective date of any changes is TBD. CBO does not yet have available information on effective date, retroactivity, et cetera." So that is the, that is the response from the, from central staff. So we do have the fourth quarter employment ordinance in my committee this coming week. There is a possibility, I don't know, it's possible there could be, and based on this, I'm not, and I do not know if this is possible, but if you're concerned about passing this legislation because of that, perhaps that's an issue that could be addressed at a later date. I will urge, though, that a lot of other employees are impacted by this legislation, and the recommendation is that it go forward. I, go ahead and, that's all the information I have. This was late-breaking concern and information that I got today.
And thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rink?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will you please read item two into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill 120920, related to city employment, commonly referred to as the Pay Zone Ordinance, adjusting the pay zones for titles in the city's discretionary pay programs, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
All right. I move to pass Council Bill 120920. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. As sponsor of the bill, I'll address it first, and then open it up to councilmembers for questions or comments. This legislation proposes the adjustments to the pay structures for various discretionary pay programs, including the Accountability Pay for Executives Apex Program, Manager and Strategic Advisor Compensation Program, Electric Utility Executive Compensation Program, Information Technology Professional Compensation Program, Investments/Debt Director Compensation Program, Legislative Department and Broadbands, Power Marketing Compensation Program, Seattle City Light General Manager, and the Chief Executive Officer Compensation Program, Mayoral Staff Assistant Discretionary Pay Program, Assistant City Attorney Discretionary Pay Program, Seattle Police Chief Compensation Program, Magistrate Program, the Seattle Public Utilities General Manager and Chief Executive Officer Compensation Program, Seattle Information Technology Chief Technology Officer Compensation Program, and the Seattle Fire Chief Compensation Program. The proposed adjustments are consistent with the percentage increases that are reflected in the city's negotiated agreements with the Coalition of City Unions. Various pay programs, collectively known as discretionary pay programs, provide for annual or biennial review of the salary structures to remain competitive in the labor market. These adjustments do not automatically create additional costs. However, the executive included proposed appropriations to implement wage adjustments for employees covered by the Pay Zone legislation in the 2025-2026 proposed budget. Are there any questions? Okay. I'm not seeing any questions or concerns here. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rink?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right. All right. Will the clerk please read item three into the record?
Agenda item three, Council Bill 120833 relating to land use and zoning, amending subsection 2349156A of the Seattle Municipal Code to clarify bonus allowances in the Living Building Pilot Program. The committee recommends that city council pass the council bill with council members Morales, Strauss, Rink, and Rivera in favor. Councilmember Moore abstaining.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, Councilmember Morales is chair of the committee, recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. So this is, as we've heard from commenters already, about the Living Building Pilot Program. The program itself is intended to promote the public interest by encouraging the development of innovative living buildings, green buildings, that can reduce environmental impacts, test new technologies, and can serve as a model for development throughout the region and the country. This particular legislation clarifies that projects in the pilot program can use height bonuses to exceed 145 feet regardless of lot size in the downtown mixed residential zone. For context, 145 feet is about 14 stories. That's the height that is currently allowed in downtown mixed residential zones. As we heard earlier, this particular project, for whom this amendment would apply, would create 180 units in the Belltown neighborhood. It would include 42 two-bedroom units and 10 three-bedroom units. The project would also pay $2.4 million into MHA. And I know that there have been some questions about stacking. We've got some amendments that will refer to that. What I will say is that the stacking of programs allows for this building in particular to add one story because they're including three-bedroom units and two stories because they're meeting the living building requirements. And given the need for more housing in the city, an additional three stories, which for this project would total 19, is in keeping with the downtown area and appropriate for the neighborhood. The extra floors will make this project only slightly taller than most of the buildings surrounding it. As clerk mentioned, the bill did pass out of committee with four in favor and one abstention. And I will pass it back to Council President because I know we've got a couple of amendments.
Well, first, are there any questions to the base legislation or comments? Okay. So we have amendment A at the table. However, there has been a comment from the clerk that there might be a substantive, that this might be substantive. So the, the general procedure is to ask that the rules be suspended so that you can, we can discuss this because it's a substantive amendment that came in after 12.
Yes, Council President.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move amendment A, version two, I'm requesting that the rules be suspended to allow consideration of this version that was distributed after 12 noon.
I think this requires a voice vote, so are there any direct, are there any objections? I see no objections. Go ahead.
Thank you. I move to amend Council Bill 120833 as presented on the recently distributed amendment A, version two. Okay.
Yep, go ahead and describe it.
Well, thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Councilmember Morales. I don't sit on the land use committee. And as you know, between public safety budget, I've been having a lot of engagement on a number of issues, but, you know, not able to, you know, essentially do the committee kind of work until attending virtually last week regarding this livable building pilot project. As I alluded to, in the community in District 7, there's been a lot of comments, a lot of engagement from different constituents, and oftentimes in conflict in terms of their positions. And so this took some time to kind of, you know, check into and, you know, just to learn more about what was going on as it related to specifically the Belltown project because of the minimum, the small lot size rules that existed, you know, within Belltown on this. And so I just want to say first that I am supportive of the goals of the livable building pilot project, all the things that are part of it, the sustainability pieces, the use of recycled, you know, materials, the energy requirements, you know, being, you know, not a drain but contributing on that front, rainwater, all those different pieces that make it sustainable, bottom line, are really important. And I'm also, as we'll come out with the comprehensive plan, I do support having varying types of housing as well. And one of the areas that we are short is housing for families. And it's not just in other areas of District 7 in the city, but also specific to downtown. I've heard from residents in Belltown that there is a lack of family housing. When I say family, just multiple bedrooms. We're not talking anything large unless you're in a massive penthouse. But it's basically for those people, you know, the opportunity to live in that urban environment of not just Belltown, but throughout the downtown, greater downtown core. And so, you know, engaging on that and then looking into the details, I'm also mindful that, you know, change is hard on people, too. And there's a lot of uncertainty sometimes or, or, you know, misunderstandings and the like. And so with that, I was just looking to, you know, bring an opportunity to highlight the stacked incentives piece, to, to basically get to a position in a more general way, so not specific to the livable building pilot project, but to use this example to highlight that we should be looking at it in terms of being clear, in terms of what is allowed. And then, you know, and then there's like the podium height, all these things that I've become like a part-time land use committee member, you know, the podium, you know, the stack, the slopes, where things are measured from, all these different things play into the numbers. And then people have different interpretations of this. And I think in terms of stack incentives, it would be good to be clear about this and because also people say, well, can you just continue to stack on top, on top, on top, on top? And that creates concern. So instead of, you know, adding to that concern, adding to that anxiety related to, you know, these different pieces, that we have, you know, some forethought and, you know, some deliberation related to stack incentives. And I would argue that you have a base number, then perhaps maybe go above that, but this would be like departing from code. This would offer an opportunity for the city to engage with a developer and say, hey, you can do this, but you may be able to do more, but is there a public good that could come from that? And I think that's kind of the mindset that we should be looking at in a more generally related way as it respects to stack incentives in terms of, yes, fostering those goals like with the livable building pilot project, but be clear about what the limits are. And then if you're looking for an exception to that rule, what is the benefit to the public? What is the benefit to that neighborhood? What is the benefit to the city overall? And so with that in mind and with that background, this amendment is offered in terms of having OPCD, Office Planning and Community Development, analyze the stacking of height incentives and their impact in various zones where applicable, including but not limited to the downtown regional center, which in this case does include Belltown, and provide its findings and recommendations to the chair of the land use committee by the December 31st, 2025. And by the way, this would be also good in terms of what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. And so with that, colleagues, I ask for your support for this amendment.
Thank you very much. Would the sponsor, are there any questions or comments on the amendment? How about from the sponsor?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kettle. I, we did have a conversation. This is a version two because I do think that while we can ask OPCD to do this analysis so that we can all understand the impacts of the stacking opportunities, I didn't think that that was an appropriate thing to include in the supplemental EIS, which was what the original version did. So Councilmember Kettle did redraft. With this new draft, I am happy to support the amendment, and I will be voting yes.
I am pulling up the Zoom link on my desk, so if you have a question or a comment, please use your hand and voice right now unless... None? Okay, I will, I, I appreciate this legislation. I appreciate the amendment. It is good to understand when we are layering on incentives to get the things that we want. It's, you know, I think that it's prudent for us to look at all the scenarios that could, that could be coming forward and be aware of, of the impacts to the, to the neighborhood, et cetera. I, so I understand that I will be supporting this, and I, I have to say that I am very supportive of the living building program in itself. I remember when the living building, when the Brooks building, Brooks Running Shoes building was being built in, well, it was being planned and deliberated in Fremont, and there was a lot of concern about some of the incentives. But we were removing barriers to get what we wanted, such as very rigorous environmental standards. And so I will say that it is, it is, we're doing our due diligence in understanding what stacking of incentives means, and I think that it's also good to always recognize that we, we do need to remove barriers to get what we want. And in this case, it's, it's larger units for families. So that's all I will say. Are there any other comments? All right, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment A?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rink?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The amendment A, amendment A passes. Okay, moving on. I understand that there are additional amendments, so I will go ahead and pass the, the mic to the sponsor of the, of amendments B and C. But you can go ahead and move amendment B, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'm actually withdrawing amendment B, so I'm just going to proceed with amendment C, version one. So I'll be moving amendment C, version one, to Council Bill 120833. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend, to amend legislation with, with amendment C. Go ahead and please explain what it does.
Thank you. So my apologies, everybody should have a hard copy of this now. It was emailed out to everyone this morning at 9:36, I'm told, but I know how difficult it is to look at emails while we're in committee. Many of us were here for public safety, so apologies for just getting the hard copy now. Anyway, I, so we heard a lot of feedback from residents of Belltown about this legislation. A lot of concerns expressed about sort of the unintended consequences of this legislation. And I, and as Councilmember Morales pointed out during our land use committee meeting, that really would be behoove us to review all of our available incentives and guidelines and how they can work together and really create a holistic approach to that. So we have that in place, so we're clear about when, how much height the end product is going to, to produce. So, and that's part of why I've supported Councilmember Kettle's bill. But given the fact that this really, this legislation is really addressed to serve one property, which I'm fully supportive of the living building program, but it was really as a way to allow that property to proceed, but it is going to open the doors to this for other properties that, some of which are on even smaller, like 7,000 square feet versus 14,000. I have concerns about it not being, sort of being open-ended. And so that's why I've brought this amendment, which would simply say that this ordinance will automatically expire at the end of December 31st, 2025, also the same time at which the report about analyzing stacking incentives is required to be submitted to the chair of land use committee. So it just gives us time to make this exception, so this project can go forward. And if there's some other projects that do want to be able to vest, they have that period of time to do so, but doesn't tie our hands beyond the comp plan and beyond the report that's, the legislation that Councilmember Kettle has just introduced. So for those reasons, I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President. Through you, to the sponsor, appreciate the intent of what you are bringing here today. I'll unfortunately not be able to support the amendment, and this goes back to how the conversation originally came to council. And what I mean by that is when the incentives were passed, stacking was assumed. That was an assumption made by the council members. That was an assumption made and understood by many members of the public. And the project before us had some adversaries using this, the appeal process to find clarity with that. And what I knew in September is the same thing that I knew, that I know today, that when this, when these incentives were originally passed, stacking was assumed. And so the reason that I'm not going to be supportive of this is because I believe from the original intent that stackings were assumed is the same thing that I believe today, and it is likely the same thing that I will believe on January 2nd of 2025, or, excuse me, 2026. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting it. And Councilmember Moore, I 100% appreciate the intent of how you are bringing this because you've connected it to receiving a report, and that interconnection is essential to good public policy. Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Are there other comments? I'm not seeing anybody else's hand raised. Okay, just a moment. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a point of clarification. I, I understood the pilot program. It is a pilot and it does, and I can't recall now the date, and I don't see it in here. So I'm confused as to, as to this amendment because it sounds like it's putting an end date. Is it different than the original end date? And apologies again, I knew there was an end date. We talked about it last week in committee, and I now cannot remember. Councilmember Morales, if Council President Nelson allows, you may know the actual year that it sunsets.
Yeah, the pilot is intended to end either when 20 projects are complete, and I think this is the 15th project, or in 2030. So if, if we don't pass this, it would allow for five more years or five more projects to be completed.
Thank you for that. That's what I thought. I just didn't remember the 2030 part, so thank you for that. I am supportive of the living building project, and as we discussed last week in land use committee, it already has a sunset date at 2030. It ends, and then council would have to either re-up it, make it permanent, make changes to it. Given all of that, I think, and we, there are five projects left that could be done, so that is to say if before 2030, five projects move forward, then that the program would sunset then. So given all of that, Councilmember Moore, I appreciate you bringing the legislation, but I will not support this particular amendment. I do support the reporting and the making sure that we are very mindful of that stacking and how that impacts all of this for the remainder of the five projects. And so, but, you know, again, really appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
Yeah, I'll just say, I really appreciate the position that we are all in as we, especially as we start to move into these bigger land use conversations that will be happening next year. These are not easy conversations. You will all be hearing from your constituents about what they like and don't like, about what is being proposed. I, I will not be supporting this amendment. I do think that in the context of a global city that is growing, that needs to accommodate more people moving here, particularly the climate refugees that will very likely be coming in the next five year, 10 years, and given the housing crisis that we know we have been in and will continue to be in for some time, all of that is important context to these, what seem like very hyper-local decisions, because those small decisions in your neighborhood affect the neighborhood over. And so as policymakers, we just need to take that holistic city planning perspective to ensure that we can accommodate families and seniors and, you know, the current Seattleites who are here and all the people who will be coming here. who are here and all the people who will be coming here. The truth is, it just makes sense to build taller buildings in our urban core, even in downtown residential, and that's what this project is trying to achieve. So I also will say, I think it's important for people who choose to live downtown to realize that the city is changing, we're growing, and our need for housing will continue to grow and continue to increase as well. So I do think that in order to create a vibrant neighborhood downtown, we need more people living there. And this pilot project would allow four more projects before sunsetting, and that's just not going to happen if we only allow for one more year of the pilot. So I do think it's important for us to allow more building that can house our workers, house our seniors, house our families with children, and that's what this remaining time of this pilot project would allow us to do. So I appreciate the work put into this, but I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettle, you haven't spoken to this bill yet or this amendment. Go ahead.
Questions as I, as I think through this and listening, because this came to me as we're sitting here, and is that, and to Councilmember Morales's point, I think, yes, I agree, and I think that will be addressed in the comprehensive plan. So really, what this is about is the environmental pieces to it, because I think the heights and all those kinds of pieces are going to get superseded by the comprehensive plan. And so then, in many ways, I'm sure somebody smart who works in the business can find a point that, you know, conflicts a little bit, but generally, the comprehensive plan is really going to be dealing with the, you know, the height. And as I said earlier, getting the varying types of buildings to allow for family or more family type of homes as well is really important. So then the question is, you know, supporting the environmental pieces to this. And then like a question would be, well, isn't that also too going to be kind of folded into the comprehensive plan? Maybe not as comprehensively as the living building project, but are elements of the living building project going to be folded into the comprehensive plan? I, I don't know off the top of my head all the details on that, but that kind of goes to whether, you know, to support this, because if it sinks in with 2025 and, you know, and the passing of the comprehensive plan, then, you know, I think we're, we're good to go on that front. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a statement and a question who doesn't sit on the land use committee and doesn't have a sense fully related to comprehensive plan and environmentally sound or smart construction.
It's sometimes difficult because I don't, it's hard to know if you're looking at me or the sponsor of the legislation, so I will ask if...
I usually end up looking at the chair, but, Councilmember Morales, is there anything on that point in terms of the comp plan, which addresses the height issues and all that, and then the environmental aspects of the living building? Do you anticipate that to be as part of the comprehensive plan, which then would make the date change not as relevant, basically is my question?
Well, I think the purpose of the pilot program is to start to understand how we allow for this kind of more green building to take place, what kind of incentives are needed, how we allow, you know, what are the costs so that we can do more of that? As far as the comprehensive plan itself, there will be, there is a climate element included in that, but that is really more, I think it is less about building code and more about how do we address greenhouse gas emissions? How do we ensure that we are, you know, encouraging more transit rather than single-vehicle occupancy? So of course, all of those things will overlap, but whether there is a specific element or a specific piece of the comp plan that relates to green building at this point, they're not about this particular project or pilot project.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes, thank you. I did want to follow up my comment earlier with the fact that since we are asking for this report by the end of 2025 in terms of the stacking and its impact, at that time we could decide to make changes to this legislation based on that report, which is another reason why I very much appreciate you, Councilmember Moore, bringing this forward in the spirit in which you brought it. And I look forward to getting the report at the end of next year and then having follow-up conversation as to whether we need to make tweaks at that time based on what we learned. So I did want to say that. Thank you.
Well, all I'll say is that this has got to be one of the longest pilot programs that I've ever heard of. I remember it was called the pilot program when the Brooks Building was being deliberated, and it was a pilot program when the Bullet Building was, was built and celebrated on Capitol Hill. And so I am not enmeshed in the, in the details of how, you know, how many more projects it would be built. I think that you said five more. Here's the thing, this, I am going to, I am going to decline from supporting this amendment just because I feel that it, we do need to see the, the end and possibly, and what is next for the living building program. For people that might not have been in the, in the land use or listened to the land use committee meetings, the living building standards go above and beyond the LEED standards. They, and they go so far as to actually trying to encourage more, more mindful behavior like taking stairs or instead of other things. And so I, my point is simply that this is, I am looking forward to seeing the culmination of this pilot and being able to really discuss what happens next to it. And I, and I'm thinking that the, that this amendment will curtail that kind of analysis when, when, when it's due, when the, when the targets are already met. So those are just, that's how I'm, that explains how I'm going to vote on this. If there are any other comments? Councilmember, yep, Kettle?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And this is not standard for me, obviously. I usually do the coordination and so forth beforehand and then work through the different pieces. But I really appreciate the amendment, and I'm thinking about my constituents as well. But I'm also, you know, thinking of the fact that, you know, we're supposed to be the Evergreen State and the Emerald City, which brings its own questions related to tree canopy. I know the community out there really cares about that. But it also goes to having the super green buildings. You mentioned the Bullet Foundation Building. And, you know, that is something that makes Seattle unique, too, in a sense of being environmentally forward. And I do recognize the challenges presented in this case, but I'm also noting, you know, the changes in the comp plan. But then we still have the opportunity to stretch the, you know, the limits and, you know, what can be done, like the Bullet Foundation Building did in terms of moving forward and to really, you know, justify the title Emerald City in that context, even as our evergreen trees continue to get chopped down.
Okay. If there are no other comments, will the Clerk please call the roll on Amendment C?
May I respond? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I just, I appreciate all the comments. I just wanted for the record to clarify that my amendment would not counsel, counsel the living building pilot after one year. My amendment, so what we're voting on, the underlying bill, is an exemption, is an exception to the living building pilot. And we're saying, because the, as I understand it, when that came about, we said, we set it, the height at 145 feet, couldn't go above 145 feet for any lot size under 19,000 square feet. This project is worthwhile as it is, is seeking to go over that, and so they're seeking an exemption, which was denied by the hearing examiner. So now we're back here legislating a solution. And so, and that solution is to allow them to go high and to stack. And to Councilmember Strauss's point, I appreciate that. I think, and I don't know, so maybe you can correct me on this, when the assumption was that stacking would be part of this, I'm assuming the assumption was it was stacking on a minimum square feet of 19,000 feet. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. But so just to be clear, my amendment is simply putting a expiration date to this exemption to the living building project for one year, not to the living building pilot itself. So just wanted to be clear for the record. Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Will the Clerk please read, call the roll on this amendment?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Rink?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
No.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Two in favor, seven opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion fails and Amendment C is not adopted. All right. Are there further comments on the bill as amended? I am not seeing any further comments. Will the Clerk please call the roll on Council Bill 120833 as amended?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rink?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you very much. The, the legislation passes, and the Chair will sign it. Will the Clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, it looks like we are now at the end of our agenda. There were no items removed from the consent calendar, and there's not a resolution for introduction and adoption today. Are there any items from my colleagues to discuss? Seeing none. All right. This meeting is adjourned. It is 3:03. Thank you, everyone. Goodbye.